... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good in all that sense. He was all set to go, right Frank?
I think so.
His customer will observe a moment of silence. I'd like to announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by local access cable and seek a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. I would accept a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Public forum, now's the time to speak. If anyone would like to speak, something's on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. I'd seek a motion to approve meeting minutes for open session November 29th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd seek a motion to approve meeting minutes for open session December 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous. Okay. We have to wait until 7:05. Beginning at 7:05, we're going to have a public hearing in regards to the application of the Memorial Field Association, Incorporated, doing business as American Legion Post Number 22. They're asking permission to keep one pool table on the premises located at 33 Legion Parkway.
Any motion for that? We have to wait.
We have to wait.
7:05, okay.
Chief Clancy?
I can. Let me just brief. As you know, I sent it out to you earlier. This past week, we had 20 positive cases, which is in line with what we've had for the last six to eight weeks out of 383 tests performed for a 5.22% positivity. We held the COVID booster clinic on Thursday, and after much discussion with the clinical coordinator, Frank and Chairman Lamatina, we are currently planning on putting our booster clinics on hold, on pause for the moment. There isn't a demand right now. What that entails, though, is the COVID coordinator will still assist anybody who needs a card that they've lost. She will also continue to assist anybody who needs to find an appointment, should they need one, and she will also keep us up to date with our paperwork. So if the need once again arises for us to hold booster clinics, or even shot clinics for matter of fact, and/or boosters, we will move forward and start those up again. And the timeframe for that would be relatively short, where we're going to maintain our status as an active, as an active location.
I have a question, Greg. If somebody needs that, get a booster shot, is there a number they can contact? Do they contract?
They can reach out through the COVID clinical coordinator, through the phone number that's on the website.
Okay.
They can reach out to her, and she will assist them any way she can finding another shot someplace. Like I said, this is just a pause. We've had very limited numbers come in recently, and it's the teens. So at this time, we'll just pause, not to say we won't start them again, and we will. And the good thing about maintaining the program is we'll be able to do it very quickly in the future, should we need to.
Thank you.
And I would just thank everyone involved. Part of those clinics, they've done an exceptional job. Okay, seeing at 7:05. Is there anyone here from the Legion that would like to speak on this? Seeing none. We all have the paperwork in our packet. If everyone's had a chance to read it, I would seek a motion for approval.
How do you make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, Chairman's report. On January 9th, the regional agreement, is it the 9th?
I believe it's the 9th.
Regional Agreement Amendment Committee will be meeting again, and Justin has asked me to put this on, Selectman Evans has asked me to put this on, to, I believe, try and find some consensus of things where, that give him some, a way to take a few things back from this board. If anyone would like to start.
Yes, we'll jump in. So this is obviously the third go at amending our regional agreement in the last five years or so. In the 2017 amendment, it got through Hansonstown meeting before they eventually unpassed it, repealed that vote, and then it stalled out in ours. I think we actually tabled it several times. But the issue that, assuming that that, all that work that we did with the, with Mars and Desi does not just go away, and we use that as kind of a template for where we want to take the new regional agreement, and including the statutory method that we incorporated in 2020, if we just take that as a framework, I'm looking for sort of any other direction that the board would like to go. The first thing that comes to mind for me was the middle school field leases, although I think that's further down the agenda, and we can kind of leave that for, for later. And the other big thing was the way that we handle busing in a district. So right now, the regional agreement has this kind of a strange separation between mandated and non-mandated busing, and how it's funded. And the trick is that because the district just passes along the cost back to the towns, there wasn't really a financial incentive for them to look for more efficiencies like they eventually found last year. I think it might make sense to bring that back to the committee and say if we wrote into the regional agreement, non-mandated students will be bused to school within whatever distance the school district decides. That puts the, I don't know, the effort back on the district to find savings, rather than we have these two pools of students, one of them the town pays for, one the district pays for. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that, but that was the only sort of difference from the amended agreement that I wanted to look at.
I think the non-mandated busing issue needs to be formalized in the regional agreement somehow. The committee will come up with some recommendations, I think, but I know the, the energy for funding non-mandated busing came from the citizens of Whitman a long time ago. And it's been funding it ever since. Hanson doesn't have the issue that Whitman has because they bus almost all the children because there are no sidewalks.
Right.
So that, that's the history of it, anyway. What irked me in this past year is that apparently there was, and Frank knows more about this than I do, there was, the region did receive some reimbursement for the non-mandated busing that the town of Whitman paid for. Is that correct? Is that, am I, am I correct?
What I understood.
And why we didn't receive the reimbursement, I don't know, since we're the ones that paid for it. So the need, that issue needs to be talked about at that committee level, I would think.
I think there's-
And clarify, the whole relationship clarified.
Yeah, I agree it has to be clarified. I think there were two sort of reimbursement questions there. One was during the early days of the pandemic, when they stopped busing students, or as many students, there was a reimbursement, and they redirected that to a capital cost, rather than send it back to the towns. There's a vote of the school committee.
Yeah, and then there was, when they changed the, the formula to go to this new mileage method, they were able to go back, claw back a couple of years for that. Now, we did see a savings-
We did. The district did.
In that year that they changed the mileage method, but their submission and going clawing back, I believe it was two years, we need to ask about that.
I think it's just one. I think they did fiscal '22, which was the year we changed it, and they went back to fiscal '21. Well, I mean, I guess we can ask.
I could be mistaken then, but I-
No, they said they could go back two years. Whether or not they did, because that would have put them back in the COVID year, you may not have had that, a lot of savings that year, but they could have gone back two years, so.
Yes, I think this issue at least needs to be in the agreement so that there's not this strange, in every, every town meeting, there's this threat that one town or the other will choose not to fund this, and the district has to then decide to treat the towns inequitably or find the funding somewhere else. And if we just take that off the table and put in the agreement, they're going to fund it, and how it's going to be funded, I think it makes it a lot easier.
Okay, on that, because I can remember when-
That makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, when non-mandated busing was in the budget, and I can remember when we were at odds with the schools as far as what their assessment was, and we gave, we offered less than what they wanted. Their threat to us is then we can't fund non-mandated busing. That's why it came out of that, and it's in a separate line item, that and the crossing yards. But I, if we totally pay for non-mandated busing, I can't see the, why the schools would even consider trying to get better money, you know, save money on non-mandated busing. I could see them doing it on mandated busing, because that saves the district money. But as far as non-mandated, that's totally on the towns. And Hanson, I assume, I don't know if they have their non-mandated busing on a separate line item, or if it's in their total-
As far as I recall, or know, they don't have non-mandated busing.
They do, they do.
It's minimal, yeah.
Kids that live on Franklin Street, basically.
Yeah, very small, maybe.
All right.
But, I mean, I know a lot of people, their argument was on, on non-mandated or mandated busing, is that they saw a lot of buses that had, you know, a bunch of empty seats. But the fact is, state says you need to have a seat for every child, right? Because in, you know, in clement weather, they may not walk, because, you know, they, you know, if it's non-mandated busing, they may want to take the bus. One of the things I'd have to, I would like to see in the regional agreement looked at, on some facet, is the way, the way repairs are maintained on the schools. I know that if any, any project or anything that needs to be done of a certain amount, what is it, is it like $20,000?
No, it's a good point. I think the school, the district and the town have different definitions of what a capital expense is.
Right.
That should probably be reconciled.
Right, and but also, I think that if there is an issue with one of the schools, whether it's in Whitman or Hanson, it doesn't make any difference, but one of the schools in the region, and it needs to be looked at, and they close their eyes to it because it's close to the town paying for it and not coming out of the school, the account, that they may let it go. And, you know, and I've always thought that. I mean, leaks in the roof, if it can be repaired or fixed right away, let it get fixed, right? Don't wait for so much damage that it's not on the schools anymore, it's on the town. So they need to look, be, look at issues like that.
And I think to avoid situations that happened this previous year, where there was $50,000 of, I don't want to say improvements, but remediation for mold, and then we just received a bill without even knowing. Luckily, we had the funds to be able to take care of that. But I think some type of heads up, either working with our building inspector, you know, the-
Well, the question is, is why wasn't that seen when it didn't cost that amount, when it was less, and instead of letting it go until all of a sudden it's on the cost of the town and not the, the school, the region?
Right, but I think what we're trying to come up with is some process, right?
Yeah.
So I think their facilities direct their needs, should be able to work with our town administrator and building inspector to somehow let us, make us aware of the strike. And I assume for the elephant in the room that we are standing fast on the statutory method.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Just, I know, one, I have a lot of respect for Chris Howard, and I think the way he's organized that committee, and the way he's done things in the past, I feel like, I'm happy that you're representing us, and I'm optimistic that things are going to work out. I know that there are going to be some contentious kind of points, but I think going in with a spirit of compromise, even if not the statutory method, but an open-mindedness is, is warranted for, I think, overcoming some of the difficulty that we're going to face with this. You know, it's, it's pretty clear that if we just hold fast on what the current agreement is, that there'll be a lot of tension on the other side. I don't know exactly what they're going to be asking for, but like I said, just going in with the spirit of being, like you always do, you know, open-minded, and, and I really appreciate the process that he's put together. But, yeah, be following me closely, for sure.
And one other thing, if I may. On the assessment, when they give us assessment, like we're, we're looking to say 5% assessment increase in their assessment, is, right, and I think it needs to be clear whether that assessment is on the full budget or just our 5% increase on our end of the assessment.
I know back when we adopted the Madden recommendations, this board took a vote of an up to 5% on the assessment to the town.
All right, okay, on assessment to the town, okay.
On the, a little further in the meeting, Dan, I'm just going to kind of address this. Do you have anything else on?
I do have one more, now that I think of it. So the, one of the issues, I think the issue, that kind of prevented the town of Whitman from passing this 2017, 2018 version of the regional agreement, was the deregionalization language. I don't know if we want to get into any of that, but based on Hanson's financial analysis of what it would cost to either partially or completely deregionalize, I think I'm okay with Desi's proposed sort of, you know, two keys in the submarine. It takes both towns to deregionalize, not, not one of their own.
Right.
Well, ultimately, Desi has to approve deregionalization, so if they're going to hold to two, what's the point of having an agreement that says one of us can-
Right, exactly, yep.
Yeah.
Let me, I may ask for a little leeway and jump ahead, and we'll get Mr. Plaza. Come on up.
I was just looking for, was approval to up the electrical fees for residential from $50 up to $75, and on the commercial end, from $75 up to $100. And everything else would stay the same, would probably be an increase over the year, about a $10,000 increase in the budget at the end of the year.
And that's-
Looking for your approval, $15 for residential, and another $25 on the commercial side to increase the fee.
Okay, so that, that is in our packets. So I would seek a motion to, at the recommendation of a wiring inspector, Peter Plaza, to increase wiring fees as is set in the agenda, and seek a motion.
Yeah, I'll take-
I'll, I'll know that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your cooperation.
So Peter, how come electricity is so expensive?
Take out a lot of, there's a lot of ways to save electricity now. Thank you so much for your cooperation.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, back to new business. Consider the closing time for the clubs and common vittlers liquor license holders to 2:00 AM on Sunday, January 1st, for New Year's Eve celebrations.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a yearly thing.
All right. Act on the resignation of Brittany Cavalo from position of member of the cultural council effective December 12th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank Brittany for her service. Act on the donation from T&amp;K Asphalt to the Whitman Fire Department Chief. Would you like to speak on this?
Thank you. I believe last month, I received a phone, a random phone call from T&amp;K, saying they were looking to reach out and see if we had any projects we were working on at the fire station, that they would like to make a charitable contribution to.
Nice.
I explained to them that we had a project going with Social of Otech, but we were also doing a commercial upgrade of the kitchen, which we're still working on, and they said they would get back to me. The very next day, they called me and offered to donate $5,000 to the kitchen project, in which they're more willing to be a partner with the community and reach out and make that donation to us.
Very nice. That mean they get a free meal every once in a while?
Hope so.
Okay, so we'll be acting to accept the donation from T&amp;K Asphalt.
So moved. I'll second it. Thank them very much.
Thank you, T&amp;K Asphalt, for all you do. Seeing a motion is moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, setting the January meeting schedule, to go back to something Dan was talking about, about the 5%, I've been in discussions with the FinCom Chair, Rick Anderson, and we believe that probably January 10th, starting our meeting at 6 o'clock, for maybe a brief budget rollout, and then we will, I think it's probably necessary that we come to some type of consensus going into the meeting with the school district on the 16th, of a position that we are going to adopt and take, and what we can relay to the superintendent. So I would ask for January 10th at 6:00, and if anyone else has any suggestions for the second date.
24th, for the second meeting.
Works for me.
Kind of works.
For you, Dan?
Yeah, works for me.
Yeah, 7:00.
Yeah, that will be a normal time, unless we would have to modify for any other business. Okay, so we'll, we'll set January 10th and January 24th. The January 10th meeting will begin at 6:00, and that will be a joint meeting for budget rollout with the finance committee. Full business. Going to revisit the policy regarding reporting days of work for exempt personnel. Mr. Linum?
Hey, my, my opinion has not changed with respect to my recommendation. And my recommendation was simply to develop a reporting system where exempt employees simply indicate whether they were present for work or not. I'm not looking for people to put down their start and stop time, but I think it's, it's important for us to know and to be able to document at a later date, when people were working and when they weren't. That became a big discussion the last time it was brought up. I frankly don't understand the argument that was made, which is unless I tell you I'm not here, I'm here. Because in the event an issue occurred, and it became necessary for us, for a deposition or other reason, to be able to provide when someone was working in the town hall, I'd have a real tough time getting people to accept, well, there's nothing saying he wasn't here, so he worked. So I don't think it's burdensome. I do know that one of the issues raised was, that just creates more paper, and I'm fine with coming up with some type of electronic reporting that would substitute for it. We're only talking about exempt personnel. These are people who do not fill out a timesheet or punch a clock. They work and they're assumed to be working, they're paid on a, well, weekly, but on an annual basis for salary, that's determined to be the value of their work for the entire year. So, you know, I never had a problem reporting time, whether it's reporting by exception and simply documenting that you're here. Every department has to sign, every department head, has to sign a payroll register every week, certifying the payments that are made. And there really isn't anything in that register that would report whether or not someone was present, ill, off-site, at a conference, on jury duty, whatever. So my recommendation in doing that is simply to be, be accountable and to hold people accountable.
This is all town employees?
This is exempt employees. Non-exempt employees now have to fill out timesheets every day indicating when they start, when they stop, and when they begin and end their breaks.
Who are non-exempt employees?
Who are non-exempt, department heads, professional personnel. So it's really not a lot of people.
Could we just set up an email inbox, and every morning you email in, "I'm here, I'm sick," whatever? I don't think we need to overcomplicate this, if there's to be a record of it somewhere.
I look at it this way, if a department head can't fill out this report, then how can they run their department? Come on, just-
All right.
Scan.
I'd just say, I, I appreciate feedback, you know, but this was somewhat of a controversial issue last time it was brought up, and I feel, not uncomfortable, but I feel like to enact a policy when we're going to be hiring a town administrator soon, who's going to be reviewing policy and that sort of thing, feels like a little out of order, in a sense. I mean, it's, I think it's fine that this personnel policy has been brought to the surface, and maybe a recommendation needs to be made that the incoming town administrator review this policy and other policies like it, but the, at least the initial feedback that I got from department heads at the meeting was that they, it did cause some tension, you know. So for those reasons, I'm still hesitant. We've never done this before, correct? This is never-
It's been inconsistent. Some departments have reported their time on timesheets, some department heads have, actually. And I discourage them from doing that, because I don't want to get into a controversy over exempt versus non-exempt. The, I know of at least two department heads who filled out a sheet every week and acknowledged they were present. I know of one that has never done it. It was an offshoot of a conversation I had with town council about a month ago, talking about accountability and knowing when and where people work. And I, a quote was, I can't remember it exactly anymore, but it was pretty much, you have an obligation to verify that the people you're paying have worked. And a total absence of acknowledgement is hardly a verification.
Now, you got-
It's also, it's also good to know, you know, at any moment, who is in the building.
Exactly, you're thinking exactly what I was thinking, yeah.
Say there was a fire in the, in the library, okay? You don't know who's there. That's kind of an odd position to be in. So, and I, I think-
I create minds-
I think our, we have one mind between us.
Yeah. Never mind.
I, I think, I think we ought to okay Frank's, Frank's suggestion. If a new town administrator is, is named at some, at some point, that person will be looking over all of the, all of the policies anyway, will be going over the policy book. I don't see any reason to put it off, because we don't have a town, we don't have a full-time, a non-interim town administrator at the present time. Our, our interim town administrator has made a recommendation, and I, I feel we should honor it.
If you had to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept Frank's recommendation of a revised policy.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Kane. Is the rule call? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's treated, what, 4-1?
4-1. All against? Abstaining? 4-1. Okay, staying in line with the policy. Follow-up on adult participant release waiver of liability indemnity agreement.
Okay, this was something that is being recommended by Meyer. I sought further guidance from Meyer on the particulars that are associated with it. The, and I kind of complicated it for them by pointing out that although senior volunteers are not typically considered compensated, we do issue them a W-2. And that seemed to cause some questions for the gentleman that works in risk management that represents us. And that conversation was, I think, late Thursday afternoon, and he hasn't got back to me yet, so I'd like to bring this back in our next meeting, rather than deal with it today. I want a clear cut.
So you want to table it?
Identification, so I'd like to table it.
Can we make a motion to table?
Sure.
Now make a motion to table that until the next meeting, or when Frank feels that it's-
I'll, I'll second it. The, the other half of your mind was seconded.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor to table?
Aye.
unanimous. Whitman Middle School lease, some very good news to report on this. This morning, myself, Mr. Linum, along with Fred Small, the- Along with Fred Small, the chair of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. Superintendent Simonak. I believe that was it from the town and the district. Had a very good meeting with Mr. Jack McCarthy, they had that MSBA where. I'm very happy to report, we have come to an agreement that the town will maintain. The lease agreement that we've had with the district. For a long time that has. Worked in favor of both the district and the town. It's something myself and the superintendent have been on the same page with for a long time, saying that all we want is what we have. The town, on the towns end, we do not have to sacrifice fields or ownership of fields. If this project ultimately moves forward and. I think it's one hurdle that we were able to get over, so the only new language that will be added. Will be regarding the. Construction phase that we are granting. MSBA in the district ownership during the construction phase, full authority and MSBA wants to add some language regarding. Any large scale repairs that we would. If they had to bring in assume equipment or anything like that, they'd be able to do that without trying to work around field usage. So very good news on that end, I think everyone was happy. Interim town administrators report, Frank.
Thank you. We have. Agenda's too long. As you know, we have a vacancy in the accounting department and we are working with. Eric Kincher CPA service, it is working well. It has pointed out a question as to. What we really do need for accounting services. We're a community of fourteen thousand people, we have a forty three million dollar budget. Our next door neighbor is a community of nine thousand people and has a thirty one or thirty two million dollar budget. And at this point in time. We are both minus an accountant, so. Logical thought that occurs to me is. Can we team together? And take a regional approach to accounting Franklin County. Council of Government does that very well. The town of Hanson. Until recently had an accountant who provided services for several towns. And Hanson was a one day a week service. If the board is amenable to it. I would like to look at the possibility. Of engaging either an accountant or an accounting service, probably preferably an accountant that could. Divide his or her time between the towns of Whitman and Hanson and the formula should be relatively easy based on. Transactional workload, so we could come up with an agreement that would be equitable to both. If it was amenable to doing that, I'd like to take a formal approach. To Hanson seeking.
I have a question.
Their participation.
Okay. As long as I've been living in Whitman, we've had a full time an accountant. Four days a week, well, one day it was five days a week. But so to go to. Drop the accountant instead of somebody here four days a week running the, you know, being the accountant and having an assistant. We're thinking about having them there here just one day a week? Every day for maybe four hours.
We'd have to figure out. What the service requirements are for each community. But right now. We have an accountant less than one day a week.
And it's working, just one day a week?
It's working.
I don't know, I'm just trying to think.
Hanson only had their accountant one day a week.
Yeah, I mean, where we went from four days a week to one day a week, I mean. Are we saying that?
I think we're saying that with the technology that's available to us today. It is. Much. Simpler. To. Maintain operations and records electronically, which takes a lot out of it. The key to doing that successfully is making sure. That the full time person who's processing invoices, receipts and payroll from week to week. Is thorough in doing their job. Because really the accountant's focus is certifying records. Making decisions on how to book. Transactions that are. Not typically routine. And making sure that we're complying. With the various Gatsby requirements for financial accounting and reporting. And we do have an outside auditor that audits us every year. So it, it looks to me to be an opportunity. To explore whether or not a regional approach. Would make sense. I'm not saying. Let's go out and hire him today, I'm saying, let's start a discussion on it.
And then, and when it comes to year end, you know, any of the year on the books. Would they be available if we need them for extra time? I would think. I mean, balancing the books at the end of the year is probably.
It's been my experience that. In the accounting office, the year end crunch is. The processing that occurs before June thirtieth, mostly focused on paying invoices from the current year's fiscal fund. From July to August, which is the settlement period. It's not as time sensitive as you might think.
We're at the truck.
Mr. Kane? Oh, sorry.
I would go with it, yeah.
I kind of have mixed feelings, I. My interactions with Ken before he switched over his, his current position was. I felt like he was a real valuable resource to have for a number of reasons. I understand like the paperwork aspect and the task oriented stuff that he was, that he had to do, but as far as the, the resource of having someone like him in the building seemed to me like. Important, granted, I'm not here every day on a regular basis, but that was my experience with him. Again, I kind of, I don't, I wouldn't mind doing something like this for short term to get us through a period of time, but I feel like it's a big decision to make as far as the financial team is concerned here and. And I think that. Knowing that we're going to be hiring a new town administrator in the, you know. Really in their future, having some input from that person about this. A pretty big shift from a full time employee to a contracted service. Could be helpful as well.
Mr. Chairman? I think this is, it's an interesting thing to explore. And it would be, I mean, by the time we have a, you know, the framework of what an agreement would look like, we will probably have a new town administrator in place.
I'll be gone before you reach that point.
You've made it clear you're not planning on sticking around much longer, so. I think it would be, I don't see any harm in starting the process now just to understand what, what this might look like. Just throwing it out there, if it were Whitman and Hanson, there is already a, an entity with original agreement between the two of us, would the schools be interested in hiring an additional accountant and. Sharing accounting services three ways, we may be able to pick up.
Boy, what could go wrong with that?
We're renegotiating the regional deal right now.
I think that our. Workload for the two towns versus the region. Are significant enough that I, I wouldn't want to. Put one service handling all three, particularly where. The. Well, the accounting process, you know, accounting is accounting, it's not, it's not subject to interpretation. You booked numbers, you booked debits and credits and, and you balance. Your books, you verify that the revenue that's coming in is what's reported. And that's where people get a little confused about the roles between treasurer and collector. Collector takes money and gives it to the treasurer, treasurer puts it in the bank, the accountant is want to make sure. That the money that comes in on one department makes it to the other department, the accountant is also the service that verifies. That payments are authorized, in fact, the statute provides. That while a treasurer can pay any bill that's authorized, the treasurer. Individually cannot pay a bill unless. It's been approved by the Board of Selectment and the accountant. So there's a process there and the accountant reviews warrants. As part of the routine process. Certainly a lot of that work is delegated to the assistant in that office.
I would say the accounting office.
Really a top notch. Employee and does a great job. When people are complaining, I know she's doing it right. But. The accounting functions, I don't want to say they're ministerial, but they're more removed. From the day to day operations because you're looking at something that's been done, processed, handled. And then you're ensuring that it's properly accounted for. And as I said, Hanson functioned for four or five years. With an accountant who went there one day a week. We have in the past. Had an interim accountant. Who worked for us around twenty hours a week. And had no problems with it, currently we have an accountant who's available when needed. To consult on things, although that accountant did have to step in to certify. All of the. Numbers in order for us to set the tax rate, which, and we didn't miss, we didn't miss a beat. I acknowledge Sean's point that our. Our. Accountant who just moved over to treasury. Has done a really great job of putting. Information together in a way that helps us to better understand things, that's something that hadn't been done in the past. And there's no reason we can't continue to do that.
So do you want to vote Frank? Or are you just?
All I'm asking for.
Consensus to proceed with the plan.
To see if the board is amenable to my. Pursuing this a little further and finding out. What the level of interest might be in Hanson and whether or not. It's in our mutual interest to do something like this. I would imagine that's going to involve some discussions. With Hanson's TA and probably with. At least. Their chairman with respect to. Is this something of interest to you?
Okay, I have another question, why just Hanson, why not maybe Rockland, why not? Even Long Island, Abington?
Well, the larger the, the group. The more demands are going to be placed on.
Are you saying Hanson is, has part time and that person is doing another town too?
Doing several towns.
Right, so I mean, if to add one more town to it, does, can this person do that, that's what I'm saying.
He's also leaving at the end of the year. He's leaving at the end of the year, is there predicament? Or perhaps.
He's gone.
Already gone, yeah.
He's gone.
Oh, okay.
I think all Frank's looking to do is to explore this. And we don't have to like come up with all of the details right now.
I like the idea. To explore it.
You know, what we'll find out is whether or not there's. Broad interest in it. And if there isn't, nothing ventured, nothing gained, the other concern I have is our current accountant's salary. As you know, I did a salary study. In preparation for town meeting. Especially and. It's pretty depressing seeing where we sat. On the financial side, we're, we're probably ten to fifteen thousand or more. Below what I would consider the minimal. Cost to get a new accountant in here and that may also be an impetus for us to look at sharing the cost.
It recently come up about seven thousand two.
Yeah. I will, by the way, share that, I thought I did, but I just realized.
Consensus then to explore and I think maybe to. Give Frank permission to talk to someone.
Frank, just jumping back, stocking Hobart's pond?
Yes. I didn't forget that.
Oh, okay, we're going to pull, hold on.
We're past the account, so let's talk about Hobart's pond. A real interesting call last week. From a gentleman named John Travers. Who has a son who's in troop twenty two. And they fish in Hobart's pond. And. In the theory of random coincidences. The director, the manager of Fisheries and Wildlife happened to be at Hobart's pond. While he was there fishing. With his son. And they talked about. The availability of fish and. The manager for fisheries said, look, if your town's interested, we'll stock the pond with trout.
And they're getting tired of catching some fish?
I thought that was a really decent idea and, and I, I don't know anything about the habitat for fish. I know if they're salmon, they need to be able to run and jump over rocks, but I assume trout can swim around in a pond or he wouldn't be offering it. If they stock it and. They do a good job of it, it makes the pond healthier and it'll certainly give. Locals more opportunity to fish. And then I pass this information on to the Conservation Commission and the DPW. And Elaine Malisi, who is in my mind, the consummate conservation commission, conservation commission. Thought it was a good idea, I'm still waiting here from Sandy, but I think that's probably a plus. And the DPW is also interested in seeing that, however. Bruce Martin brought up the question of can we set a rule? To catch and release as opposed to pulling the fish out of the pond and going away with them. Some people do that, I don't know the answer to that, I haven't researched that. It's, it's a thought, it's on my back burner, I don't know if I'll ever get down the list enough to get to that, but. But I might send out a few emails and see if somebody else has done it. But I think it's a great idea and I'd like the. Approval of the board to say, yeah, let's go ahead and do it.
I'm so moved.
Yeah, I agree, second.
Any further discussion in stocking the pond? All in favor?
And finally. As you know, we are looking for a town administrator and we kind of hit a hurdle. At our last meeting, I am working. To develop. A potential. Candidate and I am not in the position right now to talk specifics because. That person isn't prepared to be publicly outed, but I think that. We may have an opportunity in the very near future. To address that need.
I'm going to ask the chief to talk about that in a call.
No, no. Not tonight.
MBTA communities.
Oh, we missed that.
Yeah.
I thought that was part of the stocking the pond.
MBTA communities. We were recently notified that because we had not taken any action to. Provide for. As of right zoning for multifamilies within a MBTA community and within an MBTA. Station zone. We were going to be. Prevented. From qualifying for the ten percent capital. Assistance that the state provides to our housing authority every year. So having found that out, I immediately. So having found that out, I immediately went online, located the information in the application process, and then completed a request to get an exemption to allow us time to fall within compliance. So what does compliance mean? In MBTA serviced communities, chapter 40A, section 3A was modified to require that communities who receive funds provide as-of-right zoning for multifamily housing. Simply put, within a certain geographic area of the train station with an area that provides for pedestrian access to the MBTA, in order for us to continue to receive that funding, we need to adopt a zoning bylaw that gives property owners in that location or that area the right to build multifamily housing without seeking a special permit or approval from the Board of Appeals. Right now, any two-family houses or multifamily houses require a special permit. So the question that came to us was, what do we do to comply with that? So my suggestion is we take our existing zoning and identify the areas that would best qualify for density as-of-right zoning. We would present this to the bylaw study committee to develop a bylaw and to the hearing, the planning board, so they can conduct a hearing on as-of-right zoning. We would then bring that back. So my timetable is between now and January, we'd seek approval of the planning board to start that zoning process. We would then start holding informational meetings with the public so they can understand what's being presented. We would develop a proposed bylaw that would identify where that zoning is permitted, and then present that at our annual town meeting in May for approval, at which point it would become part of our bylaws and would give property owners in that zone the right to build multifamily housing. The, I'm just going to note that it's a short reading. "The MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as-of-right, provided that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. For the purpose of this section, a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre." That's the identifier that would go into the zoning, "subject to any further limitations imposed by section 40 of chapter 131, and be located not more than one-half mile from a commuter rail station." So it pretty much told us where it has to be.
Right.
The question is, do we now begin that process and seek to develop zoning that would permit us to comply with section 3A? I would, based on what the board's instructions are, reach out to Old Colony Planning Council to seek assistance in developing a map and bylaw that will allow us to identify this. And with the board's permission, refer to the planning board for further review and hearing.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Just a second. Discussion?
Okay. The reason, the reason that this, that this is being proposed by the MBTA, they're looking for ridership where parking is not required. It's that simple. We talked about this at our meeting, MBTA Advisory Board meeting years ago to start this process. That was the time when I brought the process to Hanson because of the Cranberry, the old Cranberry factory. And I says, you know, this is a great opportunity for you to do something with this area. And of course, they didn't do anything with it as of now. But in our area, we have that land that is, that's open, that maybe someone could build there. But, and of course, the old factory, but that'll now be, you know, potch up. They're going to be putting families over them, you know. But I mean, you also have an area of woods that are on that, that street that's next to the, the tracks, the other side. That could be an area where they could put housing. I mean, there's areas down there.
There's, there's certainly an opportunity to identify a zoning area that would comply with this. Pond Street, 66 Pond Street has recently been purchased. And the owner's intent in the future is to develop multifamily.
Right.
Family housing there, whether it'll be condos or apartments, I'm not quite sure. And that would be part of this process.
And condos, whether they're qualified as apartments, both apartments and condos would qualify?
Simply multifamily housing.
Okay, yeah.
The, but they cannot be, it can't be, it can't be the 40B process where 25% of it is affordable housing. It has to be as-of-right. We, we have to be able to pass a bylaw that says, you don't need to come to the Board of Appeals for approval to build your two or three-family house. All you have to do is file for a building permit. That's the bottom line. Because the permit process is what limits the number of multifamily houses that are developed in most communities. Ironically, the Park Avenue, not the Park Avenue, the, the Temple Street area up to 58 was a project that the DPW came in with Environmental Partners to talk about maybe a month and a half ago. And that's exactly the kind of thing we're talking about.
So I, I know this has come to the board. I think our previous town administrator talked about it a couple of times, highlighting the carrot and stick approach that the state was taking, where the Mass Works grants were the biggest carrot. And now we found the most annoying stick is the 10% of the capital funding for the Housing Authority that really got our attention. But a couple of things, just to, to add on to what Frank was saying. So Whitman's developable land near the commuter rail station, I believe is too low to completely contain what our requirement for developed housing is. So when we seek out this plan, we will probably need to look at the town center, being the next obvious place that already has multifamily housing. If we change the zoning there to allow it by right instead of by special permit, we comply without fundamentally changing the structure of the town.
But there's a certain distance.
So because we don't have 100 acres of land that we can develop in the immediate vicinity of the train station, we're allowed to seek a secondary location.
But they're looking for walkable.
Well, walkable to a town center is almost as beneficial as walkable to the train. It's.
Well, bear in mind that along 27, you have a number of streets that are almost all currently single-family housing. And the intent of this is to allow those properties, if the owner chooses to make it a two-family or a three-family, under the zoning rules, they would be able to do that. When I made my property a two-family to accommodate my son moving back, I had to go through that process with the Board of Appeals. I had to get a plot plan. I had to show the design. And I had to get a permit from the ZBA in order to make it a two-family house. This would eliminate all of that.
The other consideration is that since Whitman is a commuter rail community and not a rapid transit community, if you look at, these pages are numbered, we actually have until the end of 2024 to comply. So if there, there's not an immediate need to get to this town meeting if Old Colony Planning Council says they're going to take more time. I do agree that that's probably the best first step. And then there are grant opportunities available because the state's rolling this out to every town. And not every town has the money to pay for it right now. So I know the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has a grant plan specifically toward this. I'm sure there's more around.
Okay. Do you need a vote, Frank?
Yes, to, to move forward with this plan. So ultimately. The vote would be to proceed with.
Going to planning.
This development and go to the planning board. Yes.
Just because, just for clarification, some people may have a problem with this.
And that's why you have to have hearings.
Right.
Because it may change the fabric of certain areas of. So just, I, I think it needs to be clear that people will have, even though the vote tonight is to proceed based on state basically guidelines and regulations, citizens will have an opportunity to have their voices heard over this. Okay. That's all I have to say. We have a motion in second.
I, I believe, do we have any motion in second?
Yes.
Yes.
The, the other thing to note in their calculations by the MBTA, we have 5,984 housing units. And the minimum multifamily capacity would become 898. It doesn't mean that they're all going to become multifamilies. It means that the property that's in that selected zone will as-of-right have the ability to apply for permit. They, they simply, it's pre-approved. They simply have to meet the building requirements.
Okay. Motion in second, seeing any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. That has exhausted our agenda. I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.